We're going to open the Lennox Board of Selects meeting for Wednesday, September 1st, here in Town Hall. We're happy to be here. We're all going to be masked just to keep us all safe and secure. And first, I'm going to go for announcements from the Chair. First, I want to thank Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito and Representative Smitty Pigmettelli for engaging our town department heads, the Chamber of Commerce, and local businesses on their visit here August 30th, a couple of days ago, to Bestern, Massachusetts, as they refer to it, which was adorable. There were representatives here from the State Department of Economic Development and Mass Development as well, so that was really great. We were able to speak to them about some of the needs that we have here in Lennox, which should hopefully develop into some positive things for the town. But most importantly, the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, and Representative Pigmettelli presented a legislative citation recognizing 25 years of remarkable meritorious service to Ms. Amy LaFave, our Lennox Historic Librarian at the Lennox Library. She's served the Lennox Library and the citizens of this town for 25 years, and that was a lovely gesture that the Lieutenant Governor and Smitty made happen. It was really terrific. Second, I would like to remind the public that there is a form available online at the Town of Lennox website for volunteers to help everybody in our fine town on boards and committees. If you go to the landing page under Forms and Applications, and then go to Home under Forms and Applications, the first item listed there is the Town of Lennox Committee Application. We currently have vacancies on the Planning Board and the Affordable Housing Trust and Committee, so it would be great if we could have a few interested volunteers fill out that form and hopefully become appointed to these worthy committees. And finally, I just want to remember, remind everybody that morning traffic will be picking up tomorrow, September 2nd, as the Lennox Public Schools return to session. We want to wish the school department a safe and productive start to their academic year, and can't wait for those soccer games to start, so.
And basketball and volleyball.
And basketball and volleyball. Volleyball is very fun, too. All right, I'm going to ask for an acceptance of the minutes of August 18th.
Yes, Madam Chair, before we do that, if you don't mind, I'll remind you that when we meet in person, we do need to announce ourselves per state regs.
Thank you. Excellent.
So Neil Maximilian present.
Mary Beth Mitz present.
Dave Robson.
Warren Arche.
Great, thank you very much.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August 18th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Citizens Open Forum. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the Select Board? All right, seeing that there is no one to address, the Select Board will move on to the consent agenda. First, there's the appointment of someone new to the Affordable Housing Trust. I want to thank Jackie McNinch, who recently resigned from the trust. She was a member for at least five years. I don't have the exact number of years, but she's been very active in her capacity with Lee Bank and Adams Community Bank in her iterations there, helping us with the First-Time Homebuyer Program, helping approximately 11 families move into Lennox with loans through the First-Time Homebuyer Program through the Federal Home Loan Bank, which was really terrific. She's done a lot of work for this town, and we want to thank her for that. But because she's resigned, I would like to appoint Chris Fenton to fill this vacancy. Second, there's the use of Lilac Park. The Chamber is seeking permission to use Lilac Park on Sunday, October 3rd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for a musical event.
Hold.
Thank you. And Coaching Weekend, Harvey Waller is seeking our permission to hold the annual Coaching Weekend/Tub Parade, I've heard it called as well, this year on October 9th through 11th of 2021.
Madam Chair, subject to the hold, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
And addressing the hold?
Thank you. You and I put the hold on, and we're so fortunate to have the Chairman of the Chamber here tonight, and I wonder if maybe she could give us a little information on that.
Yeah.
Would you step up there?
I'm going to go into my whole phone line agenda.
It's actually on the update as well, right?
Yeah.
What should we do?
We've got it as general business. It's the second item on general business.
So Jen, if you want to incorporate it to your update, we can wait until then and do the whole thing at once.
Yeah. Okay. So. I'm contingent on the hold. I moved, or do you want to move?
I think it's a separate motion.
It's the same, okay.
So why don't we make the motion, and then we'll explain it later? That's fine.
Madam Chair, we'll make a motion that the hold is moot, and that the explanation regarding Lilac Park usage will come later in the Chamber's presentation.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Thanks, Jen. We'll be on to you in just a moment. Okay, general business. We have Brushwood Farms Housing 40B Project before us. The town received a project notification letter and a site eligibility application for a project at Brushwood Farms that's going to be going before the Department of Housing and Community Development for a project eligibility letter. The Board needs to submit comments regarding this proposed project to DHCD during our 30-day comment period, which expires September 17th. So just as a point of discussion, I'd like to open this up for discussion. It's a proposed rental project of 65 units of rental housing. A number of them, 50 of them, are going to be for low-income households. 15 of them will be for moderate-income households, up to 120% of area median income. And there are various site maps and outlines of the project in the packet that we received. I spoke to Massachusetts Housing Partnership to Catherine Lacy to get some technical assistance on reviewing this packet for the 30-day application. I was a little concerned about the pro forma sources and uses, and she said, "That's really not in your purview. That's going to go to DHCD, and they really handle the financing aspect of it. We're looking to you for comments on the project. Specifically, is it too tall? Do you not like the design? Are there concerns for public safety, infrastructure, et cetera?" So I'd just like to open up this for discussion.
I'll start.
Great, yeah. Thanks, Dave.
Okay. I've been a big proponent of affordable housing homeownership for the last many years, but we've come to such a crisis point in affordable housing that I think this will go a long way to helping us. Can you tell me, if this is completed, how does that stand us up for affordable housing in the community?
If we, if this project becomes approved by the state and, you know, they get financing, this is a private transaction between a developer and the property owner, this will get us to 9.4% of our SHI, of our necessary affordable units. We're supposed to have 10% total units in town as markets affordable. This will get us to 9.4%.
So it pretty much takes a monkey off our back.
It does.
Okay. The other question I have is that, and I know this is way out there, but this is being built in Lennox, and do Lennox residents get a priority in obtaining one of these units?
As part of the application to DHCD, Penrose is going to ask for at least a 70% preference for Lennox residents. There's something that they did on Cape Cod. They built a project like this on the Cape.
Right.
And they got buy-in from, the project is sited in Eastham, but they got funds from Orleans and Barnstable County as well. So the project was 100% available to Barnstable County residents, so all the residents came from the Cape. So ostensibly, if we could get maybe Lee and Pittsfield to participate with funding, we might be able to make this a Berkshire County, so only people in Berkshire County could apply to this.
Okay. I was once involved in a project in Pittsfield that we had, not guarantees, but promises that that would happen, and it didn't happen because it was built with state funding or tax credits.
Yep.
And they stepped in and said, "No, you have to open it up to the whole state." And at that point in time, many residents came from central Massachusetts as opposed to Pittsfield, which we had hopefully promised to the folks. I certainly would want to see that here.
It's my understanding that we might be able to ask for a county preference, a 100% county preference, but by and large, DHCD's only been approving a 70% local preference.
Okay, because I mean, we have our school teachers, and we have our police officers, and we have other people who are working that can't afford to stay in Lennox, and I'd certainly like to see them get first crack at this housing, if that's at all.
That's where I was going to ask about the mechanics of this. So when you say Lennox preference, do you mean working in Lennox?
Working or living in Lennox.
Working counts.
Yes.
Okay. Because that's my biggest concern, is the teachers, the police officers, the preschool folks at, you know, Lennox Children's Center, who can't afford to live here.
Right.
I'd also like to factor in familial tie to Lennox, because I know of several situations where families have been here for a generation or two or more, their children go away to school, and can't afford to come back here.
Right.
So I think that ought to also merit preference for people.
Okay, I don't know about that, but we can make that part of the comment letter that we send back, that we would really like to see 70% include those people as well.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of that. I just, I agree totally with what Neil said, and, you know, it's a good project. It's in a good location for that project. You answered some of the questions I had about infrastructure and so forth earlier on, so, you know, it seems to be expensive, costly, same thing, but doable over a long period. What's the timeframe, do you think?
They would like to go before DHCD for a funding cycle in January of 2022, so in a few months.
But that is a too few.
Yeah, it's upon us. You know, and if it doesn't make it in that round, then they would wait till the following round in 2023, and, you know.
Once it gets funding, what do you think the shovel day is?
That's a very good question. I really couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I'm not that far down the road on this.
So if we ask for funding and the funding is approved, does that help us out in our affordable housing numbers, or do we have to wait till this is completed?
Well, it'll help us out once they are completed.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Because it's in process, it will count toward our, you know, okay, they're making good faith effort, you know, they've got this project that's coming down the pike. You know, I would think that they'd probably put a shovel in the ground before the end of 2022, but given building materials, I can't, I actually, no.
So hopefully in four or five years it'll be built.
Yes. I would think in four years. I did hear that they're going to have to spend the first season blasting. I did hear that, because there's ledge.
Yeah, but, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Sure, no, that's fine.
That's a monk tops.
Okay. So maybe that would be?
As someone that does that.
Yes, okay, good. Well, you would know. Thank you. Good question. I have a comment or concern that it's an all-electric project, and electricity rates are pretty high in Western Mass, and so I'd like to just, you know, put into the letter that it would be great if they could consider solar on the roofs.
Let's co-locate some windmills right there.
Sure.
Got high ground.
It's very high ground. I'm not really, I'm not really as crazy about the windmills as I am about the solar.
Okay, so you were talking about a wind project. We went through this before. We had a committee of people who were in favor and the people who weren't, and we got together. And I guess one of the things that we discovered was that we are not in a zone with enough wind to justify windmills. So I know that we have them up north, but were you part of that?
I was not here to that.
No, Dave, I said that tongue-in-cheek because my experience with the projects up in Hancock, they're just so tough to permit or to cite.
Yeah.
That we don't need to add another challenge.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, no, it's high ground.
But I think the technology's there for the roof solar.
Yes.
Nowadays, and I think that would be an ideal way of mitigating some of those expenses, but I'm sure that you're going to look into it, or somebody's going to look into it. But yeah, electricity rates certainly are high in Berkshire County.
And then the final concern that I had was that I believe the project assumes, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding the word. An allocation of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust and an allocation of funds from CPC.
Right.
Totalling out to be about $1.6 million. So looking at maybe $600,000 from the trust, a million from CPC, clearly CPC has their process.
Right.
You know, they may issue a bond, they may not.
So it's really not a burden on the taxpayers?
No. I wouldn't say it's going to be a huge burden on the taxpayers.
Right, right, okay.
At the Affordable Housing Trust, we currently don't have that $600,000, because we only have about $160,000. We're trying to do some affordable homeownership projects.
Right.
And we do go to CPC to ask for that money, you know, every year, but there is the $600,000 that's wrapped up in.
Right, I was going to ask you about that.
In Sawmill, so, you know, short of us putting it on the market and hoping somebody purchases it for $600,000, should the public safety building ultimately end up using that as a site.
Then you get your $600,000 back.
Well, I think it would go back to CPC.
Yes, if I mean, yes.
Hopefully then come back through the community.
Yes, well, they have the asset, right.
Okay. I'm just putting that out there, that that's another speed bump in this.
Okay. Not insurmountable.
I believe, sitting with the CPC folks, that though regardless, this is large, they'll spend a fair amount of time thinking about it. There is some tendency among the CPC members to fund on a continual basis, sort of slow-burn projects, like, you know, a regular contribution every year to Trinity Church, for example.
Right.
And so I think they get a little reticent to stop those things, but, you know, there's a pretty large amount of funding that went to the new barn project at the Audubon.
$300,000.
That's not going to happen, so, you know, I believe the CPC is in favor of projects like this. I mean, and I'd like to add that whatever we can do, you talked about a short timeframe, but whatever we can do, well, let me ask, at what stage do we need, or do we have any decision points that need town vote on this?
None.
None, only if there were an appropriation.
Not because of the way this is set up with us not purchasing the land, right?
Right, correct.
All right.
So, yeah, so, good point, right? So that makes it different from the previous proposal that went to town meeting.
Right, I'm trying to forestall.
Yeah, sure.
What I think is probably some inevitable opposition, although to me, the location would seem to generate a lot less. It's not immediately adjacent to a neighborhood.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, I agree.
Commercial activity and other activities occur in that area. And I just think the need is more dire than ever.
Substantial, yeah.
I mean, this is off-topic a little bit, but I, in addition to this, which will put a big boost to our percentage on affordable housing, I still feel that we as a body, at some point in time, need to talk about what I'll call housing that's affordable. Not necessarily meeting the 40B criteria, but definitely below market rate.
Right, affordable homeownership.
Because, you know, some teachers, some folks in the public safety arena, you know, they're not necessarily at the depth to need to qualify for affordable housing, but they'd like to be here. And if we had stock in the range that would be appropriate for them, that would be really nice.
I completely agree.
Don't you think we could treat this as a stepping stone to that goal?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we capture them, and then we give them the opportunity at a later date, hopefully, to, you know, get into homeownership.
Yeah. This rental project would actually be, you know, a great building block in the cycle of housing, because usually when you leave your parents' house, you move into an apartment. If you're a young person, you're saving money until you amass enough to get a down payment, and then when you're older and you're looking to downsize, because you don't need that four-bedroom house anymore, the kids have plunged out, you know, it'd be great to.
Thank you for reminding me.
You know, it's great to go back to something that's, maybe you don't have to take care of the lawn anymore, you know, you have somewhere safe to be, and you're still in Lennox. So this is, you know, part of that life cycle of housing, and rental housing, I think, is a necessary component of that. So.
Well, and we may attract folks that don't necessarily fit. We're talking about our local workers trying to live in Lennox, which is a major component.
Right.
But if you walk the streets of Lennox right now, you hardly find a shop that's not looking for help. And I think, and Jen could probably speak to this better than I, a lot of the shops have realized that they have to pay what they call a living wage, and so they're bumping up their starting wages up to like $17 and $18. I think some place is $20, so, you know, that's getting to the point where you can afford to be somewhere.
Exactly.
And like be struggling.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that update.
Great, well, thanks. I'll look at these comments together and provide a draft to DHCD.
Excellent.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Now, I'd like to introduce Jen Nocht, who will be updating us on the future events of the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jen.
I'm Jen Nocht. I'm directing the pastings out. Before I get into what we're going to do, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we did this summer. So first of all, we kicked off the summer the weekend after Memorial Day with the Spring Art Walk, which was probably the hottest, funniest weekend of the entire summer, if anybody can remember that far back. That was before the torrent rains started and didn't stop. So we had a really good turnout on Saturday, Sunday. It was, I mean, in the 80s, and very hot, and, you know, not as much foot traffic, but what we did find were the artists that came back, that were returning artists from the Fall Art Walk, they all made money. They made more money than they did on Saturday, just that one day, and I felt that that was a really good sign of what was to come for the summer, in terms of people spending money and getting out. People were clamoring to get out to do things. So we had a pretty lively summer. Most of it was, for us, was getting back to helping folks in the visitor center. We had about 1,200 people come through since the beginning, since Memorial Day weekend, maybe more, 1,400 maybe, calls constantly, so just managing that, and then supporting all of our businesses in town and the culture, whatever they were doing in terms of promotions and things like that. So that's kind of become our cycle, you know. We push the shoulder seasons with our events during the summer. We're not doing, you know, heavy marketing, we're doing supportive marketing. So I did pass around the guide that came out, the annual guide. We had to go to a second reprint, because we went through, I think it was 9,000, the first run.
Fantastic.
And we just did another run, because fall, you know, we're going to have, I think we'll have a good fall. So people still coming in, loving to pick it up. We downsized it, made it very clear. We got a lot of really good feedback on it this year. I mean, Deirdre, our graphic designer, is amazing, and I think she's really hooked up our sort of graphics and look for the town and the chamber and whatnot. One of the other projects we did is the banners that are all around town, supporting culturels and everything else that we have, the outdoor, there's a banner for upper recreation, you know, for everything that we offer in Lennox. So I know that was kind of a long-time thing to talk about, like, I think when I started my job, you know, doing something that highlighted everything in town. So we've got 24 banners around town. Probably get those down before the winter starts, and.
So those are reusable? You can put them in next summer?
They are, they are. So we did, I mean, we still have more lampposts, but I didn't want it to, for lack of a better word, tchotchke off the place, and I wanted to see, it was also expensive, so I just was like, okay, let's just see how these go, how they, you know, and again, people were like, those are so, you know, very cool, you know, they were getting some good feedback. So our big thing that we came out with that just went live is our Explore Lennox app. And so what I did here is if you go to Google Play or any of your app, you know, the App Store on your phone, whatever device you have, and you go, and you put in Explore Lennox, what's going to come up is a picture of Lennox Cultural District. When you download it, it's going to have, it'll show you, we have right now six tours on there, different itinerary. We've got the historical tour, we've got a cottages tour, which I think we're still populating that. We've got, if you're a day in Lennox, we've got the recreational tour, you know, where you go for recreational. This is not, this is not an event, it's not, it's not in, it's not instead of the website. This is different. This is for people to come and have itineraries for Lennox. So this is the, and the app that Mary Beth found was amazing. I was just telling her, like, this exceeded my expectations. I had a vision for what I wanted. It's so easy to use. We've had people testing it for the last two weeks that, you know, didn't know what it was about, just to tell us and give us feedback. And again, we're ready, we're launching it this weekend, you know, to the masses. So that was a big part of our summer, was populating that.
Yeah, it was very, very busy.
It was tedious.
We had a lot of fun.
And there's still a lot more to do, but, you know, we worked with the cultural district and, you know, like I said, we're really proud of it. And we got it, we got it out in record time, too. We started this, what, mid-June, really?
Yep, we did.
And so here we are, Labor Day weekend, and that was like our goal, and we got it done. So that's pretty cool. Then what else do we have? Oh, so we've had a lot of new members because of the changeover in businesses and inns and things like that, so getting out there, meeting them, checking out Apple Tree Inn, all the new inns. I'm actually going to Ophelia's this week, which opened up, which is, I'm hearing great things about that, so I'm going to hit that this week myself. Apple Tree Inn is becoming the place to go Wednesday through Saturday when they have live music on the lawn. It's just been, anyway, so we've got some, you know, new inn owners that are just, you know, hit the ground running. Cornell Inn has now opened a restaurant as well for the weekends, and I guess you guys are all aware of, like, you know, the bars, you know, everything that comes before you. So they're getting out there and working to PR for that, for those, you know, those things. Now, we are moving into, so the visitor center I covered, Lennox Farmers Market is still going on until October 1st. We may pull back a little bit early, because we are losing vendors. Again, the farmers, since the summer, summer people have left, they don't have people to work the farmers market, so, I mean, we're just, it's just like everybody else. It's like you have to cut back days or whatnot, so we might end it in mid-September, because I'd rather, I'd rather not have it than have it look pretty weak.
Yeah, right.
But it's been really successful this year, you know, more people. So each year it keeps going, and, you know, we'll talk about it and see if we still want to have it in that same location next year.
That must have been part of the construction this year.
It was difficult, we had some difficulty, and the rain.
Right.
So because of the construction and the rain, we were flooded half the time, so, and hopefully, we won't have a summer like that for a good, have that one. Oh, the other thing we got up and running is a Lennox Bulletin Board. It's a Facebook group for anybody that joins that's a Lennox resident, they can post a help. that joins that's a Lennox resident, they can post a help wanted services, things for sale, you know, where to get firewood, ask questions of others. It's just a way for the community to communicate on our own Lennox Facebook page. So that, we finally got up and running about a month ago. When I wrote this, we had about sixty, sixty members. We probably were up to seventy. We have a couple, you know, a couple people joining every day. So that's pretty, you know, we're happy with that as well. Next thing coming up. So now we start to go into our heavy event schedule. We, right now, we have planned the September 18th and 19th, we have the Fall Art Walk. And so we are still signing up artists. We probably will have about fifty artists, which is about the same size as the Spring Art Walk. We're gonna condense it and have it a little more downtown, you know, more of the artists all downtown. In Lilac Park, we're gonna have music and art demonstrations the two days, Saturday and Sunday. Then next weekend, we have the 41st Apple Squeeze. And that's Saturday, September 25th, from 10 to 5. We have scaled that back quite a bit. Right now, we're at sixty vendors. And when Dave and I had talked, I said, that's kind of where I'm trying to hold steady. And so we're there just because I want to be able to space out the tents, the vendors, you know, get some space in between. I don't want to have bottle naps on the sidewalk, but we're gonna, again, it's gonna be up and down the Main Street sidewalk. Just spoke with the Lennox PTO. They're coming back and they're gonna do their family thing in Lilac Park. So they're taking that back over. We also have music set up. We're gonna use the gazebo for the music, just sort of like light, you know, like fun, you know, family-oriented music.
Great.
Let's see. Oh, and then a new component to the Apple Squeeze is we're gonna have a student art show.
Oh, good.
We're asking for submissions from students, grades six through 12, in all of the Lennox schools, not just the public schools. Anybody that wants to participate can put in a submission. And for the seniors, they will be, they're going to be judged. And whoever is chosen, you know, with the best artistic composition will receive a $250 scholarship from the chamber, which is also, we've gotten sponsors to help us out.
Great.
Lee Bank, Adams Bank, Canyon Ranch, and the Lennox Cultural District. The remaining grades will get a hundred dollars to put, to give to a charity, a local charity. Whoever participates in that grade gets, they get to decide where they went.
That's cool.
Yeah. And so the, and the, what's the word? The, what we've given them as the theme is inclusion and diversity. What does it mean to you? So we're excited. And then, so it's going to be shown at Wells Gallery. Linda Strauss from the WIT is going to help, she's helping with the art, the whole show and with judging. We're looking for somebody else from the community to help judge that's, you know, within the DEI community.
I community.
Yeah, DEI community. So we're really, we're really excited about that. Because we like to do something that's, you know, last time we did the Instagram, the Instagram component, we ended up giving money to four students. But this, you know, we're trying to bring an artist component into it. Then the next event, which was up on the agenda as well, the RIG is a, they started out as a theater group, but they've become, they've evolved to become a performance group. And what they do is they bring performances to underserved people or people that can't get out to go, to go to the theater. So they will go to assisted living. They'll go to, you know, a veterans hospital. They'll go to, you know, schools that just don't get an opportunity. And they do really cool stuff, like they'll have individual singers and, or they'll do a comedic act or poetry. And so we're doing, during Art Walk, they're gonna come and do like a 15-minute set to get people going, you know, to get them interested in coming to the concert, which will be at Lilac Park, free to everybody. You know, I mean, we'll probably get like 75 people.
That's great.
So this is, just to highlight, this is the request for the use of Lilac Park that we were talking about earlier.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, we're gonna support them with promotion and we're not, you know, paying them a fee. They're doing it because they're trying to promote their program. And I just, you know, it was brought to us by one of the chamber board members. And so I think it's very, it's very cool. So it kind of like fits into sort of our whole cultural district scope. And I like, you know, that they're, you know, they'll invite people from the Curtis and help bring them over if they have to, that kind of thing. So. And so it would be an afternoon, very low impact, three o'clock to five, maybe, probably not even that long. You know, they'll do some rehearsals beforehand. But, you know, they're very respectful of the neighbors. They're not gonna do any, like, you know, loud music, just, you know, a guy with an acoustic guitar or something like that and poetry. And let's see, what else? The Chamber Windows wanted to bring up what we are planning to do. I don't know if all of you saw the window where I have the Garden of Eden, which was, which was all of the restaurants promoting all of them. Now I'm going to do, it's gonna be a giant coffee mug. And it's gonna say our cup run it over with our stores. And it's, we're gonna have pictures of all of our retailers because of October and, you know, the buying season for Christmas happening. So hopefully that will be okay again. It will be very artistically done. And I will, I did speak with BJ, and she said, just include me in the loop, you know, whatever you're doing. With our event, we would like to get some of our sidewalk signs back up, like Lennox Loves Music. We'd like to put some back up at the dining terrace. We had sort of a lower-than-usual attendance this past Sunday. So that's back going on for the next six weeks. And that's just the Lennox Loves Music Sunday, 3:30, those, you know, the signs, the green and yellow signs. I should have brought in example, but. Then the other thing, oh, the other window is going to be promoting the Explore Lennox. It's just a giant poster. It's a giant poster that the back lane is the map that's inside our guide. And then it'll have, and then it shows the tours that are on it. So, you know, pretty simple, but, you know, the big globe of our map. And then the other window, which is, it's facing Main Street. Shakespeare Company came in and put some costume mannequins in the window, advertising their show, their fall show.
Great.
So I think that's all I got. I think I've worn your time, sorry.
That's a lot. No, that's fantastic. You guys are really motivated this year.
Yeah.
So can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to put you out of spot.
Yeah.
I don't expect specifics. But generally speaking, where do you think we stand with the budget?
We're doing really well with the budget in terms of, I don't foresee right now, because of Apple Squeeze, that, you know, we'd be asking for any money.
Okay.
If that's where you're going with that, like right now, for any of the programs going forward.
Okay.
For the end of this year.
Basically, what we've appropriated this year has been sufficient to fund your programs.
Correct.
Maybe, might even end up a little bit better.
Yeah, because with Apple Squeeze, you know, the big fundraiser, which we lost last year.
Right.
Because we're, you know, downsizing it. So my costs are down. So really, I mean, I'm only doing it one day. So I had to, you know, reduce the vendor fee.
Right.
But still, you know, we're gonna come out. So I'm able to fund the other stuff that we want to do. And then we, you know, we sort of move on to the holiday, the holidays and what we want to do. But, which we'll probably do, you know, some sort of, the Christmas tree or the, you know, holiday tree walk again. But I just gotta get through this one.
Well, I hope so. Those are successful.
But, but, yeah, no, we're doing well on budget, managing our budget right now. So. Anything else? Any other questions I can?
Well, congratulations on conquering COVID, so to speak, but working through it.
Yeah.
And the town's still having a good year. And I certainly appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. It's been really nice working and having a closer relationship actually with the Select Board. It makes, makes my job a little, you know, easier and just like having communication.
Makes our job easier.
Yeah. I'll start there with commending you for being as transparent as you are and coming to us with what you're thinking. And, you know, I'm sure my colleagues will certainly tell you when it's too much detail, but I appreciate the detail because it really helps everybody to know what's going on. I think it was, I hate to say this in the past tense, but a fantastic summer from my experience. Having moved now within walking distance of downtown, I'm in this area much, much more. And my observations are that people are always full. And I've had store vendors, you know, even some of the store vendors that were on us for a while, tell me they've had the best weekends they've ever had. The one, I really hate to go down this road, but the one nitpick that I noticed was that some of the stores felt that we could have bannerized or advertised tax-free weekend a little better. Because they all had terrific weekends, but they felt like they didn't see that. But generally speaking, between the coffee shops and the stores that I went into, people were just, you know, lack of help.
I agree.
And busy.
That's what I was hearing.
Always busy.
Anecdotally, too, was people had their best June that they've ever had. And, but what was, you know, really tough was that some people had to close, you know, also, which was typically open for lunch. They couldn't be open for lunch because they only had a certain amount of staff. And they just, you know, so, but that's beyond all of us. I mean, that is something we brought up yesterday with the Lieutenant Governor. And, you know, again, it's happening, it's happening across the US. But, but I think we, yeah, I think we did really well. And we also had tangledwood at 50% capacity. And the restaurants, I mean, Jason Majad yesterday said that he had his best summer ever, he's frozen this past summer. And so it just goes to show you that, not that we want to, but we could potentially, we might be able to survive, you know, tangledwood.
Yeah, we'll work on it. This is not necessarily your, you know, area to deal with, but my other observation, having spent a lot more time on foot in town, especially early in the morning, is that we've got to continue working on our parking issues. Not just that we lack spaces, but my observation has been that many of the shop owners regularly show up on, at the same hour and park in the same spot, which is a prime tourist spot.
Right.
On Main Street or on Church Street and go into their store. The car's there all day. And so, you know, as we work on our parking plans.
We've tried, in the past, we've tried to mitigate, or, yeah, mitigate that by having a specific officer in charge of, you know, putting chalk on tires and issuing tickets. And we had, we had some success, but we also had some animosities.
Yeah, I know that didn't go great.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, I think they have to police themselves a great deal. I mean, if I'm a shop owner, the last thing I want to do is chase a customer away because I took up a space, but, or an employee did. So, I mean, if, if on your walk, you went down behind the bank, I'm sure you'd find some empty spaces. The only time I've seen behind the bank full this year with concerts, it was with the concerts in the park.
Yep.
The rest of the time, there's, I don't wanna say ample, but certainly plenty of extra parking down there that should be, should be used by employees and shop owners. But Select Board can't police that.
No, I'm not saying we police that. I think that...
I know. And nor, the Chamber can make them aware of it certainly, that it is available and make sure that they know that it's out there. But, you know, they can't police it either. And either can Chief O'Brien effectively do that. So it's, it's a conundrum for sure. And I think it's something we've got to talk about. Maybe we can come up with a solution. But, yeah, it's a, it's a good point. And we need to talk about that in our parking plan.
I'll certainly bring it up to the board and to the members and see collectively. Because those are the, those are the people most effective. I mean, they should be able to, okay, so how are we going to, how are we gonna fix this? You know, we all want customers. It's like they will park in their own parking lots, what they'll park in somebody else's parking lot all day. There's, there's that parking war, too, that goes on. So, yeah, you know, I'll, I'll work on that over the winter months and just, like, get up some surveys and see what kind of...
That sounds like a good idea. Because when we had a check that was musical chairs, you know, if people would park for an hour in front of their store, then somebody else would just swat with them. So it was just...
It was crazy.
It wasn't an effective approach.
Right. But if they're involved in the solution, they might be more apt to follow to whatever, you know, thing we, whatever we come up with.
Well, let us know what you come up with.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So are we good then with the October 3rd?
Oh, yeah, we already voted it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
All right. The Board of Selectmen Liaison reports. Warren, anything?
Yeah, just some observations. I see good news out of tonight's meeting. Affordable housing, an issue we've had to deal with for quite a long time. It looks like there's at least a partial solution on the rise. My children, like other ones, have said the same thing. Here, we can't afford to live, or we can't afford to learn, we can't afford to housing. And this, this is encouraging in that area. And also the Chamber, our faith in the Chamber and our funding with the Chamber has proven smart money for the, for the town and the direction of the town. And I'm pleased to hear the progress and see what, see what the Chamber's up to. It certainly makes me feel, and I think we all do, that we've invested wisely and things are paying off. So that's, that's my liaison bid for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Well spoken. Thank you.
Jen gave my liaison report earlier. Yeah, I really don't have anything else, but yes, thank you. And I, I echo that, Warren, so.
Well, great. Well, it was really great to get everybody's comments for the 40B comment letter. That, those are all very good comments. We've gone to all the department heads as well.
Okay.
And they're each providing a letter with their concerns or their items of interest that they would like focus on. So that's been good, too. Neil?
Yeah. You mentioned it in your opening remarks, so I'll just reiterate it. With school starting, we are going to have, maybe not necessarily more, but probably somewhat more. But more importantly, denser periods of traffic at certain hours of the day. And when school starts, it always takes a week or two at least for us to get into a rhythm. The buses, figuring out their new stops. They're not gonna all arrive at the same time. Kids learning, you know, who are driving to the parking lot for the first times themselves, learning when to get in and out. That Bus Tonic Street intersection, as we sadly know, is a tough one. So I would just ask the public in general to be very cognizant that school is starting. There'll be young drivers on the road. There'll be more of them. And there'll be some congestion points, as we always experience, that usually work themselves out. But it takes a while to get into the rhythm. So, you know, everyone should drive with extra caution.
Good advice.
Good point.
Thank you very much. I'm just gonna let everybody know that the library has new hours. They are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They're gonna be open from 10 to 7. So that increases their evening hours. Friday and Saturday will be 10 to 5. And there will be no library hours on Sunday and Monday. They've also eliminated library fines, which is fantastic. Forever. They just want you to return the book. That's all they're going for. We just want to be able to share those books with the rest of the community. So that's very, very kind and forward-looking of the library. I want to remind everyone that the Lennox Cultural Council, their applications are open and they are available through October 15th. There are deadlines for organizations, schools, and individuals to apply for grants that support cultural activities in our community. Arlene Schiff is the spokeswoman and the council chairman for this. And these grants can underwrite projects, programs, events in the arts, humanities, and sciences that all foster a rich cultural life for Lennox residents. So it's not just available to people in the schools, but any kind of activity or event that could be promoted and provided to the public. So those applications are available online.